Good evening and welcome to the May twelfth Muscatine School Board meeting. We will start with roll call.
Director Conner.
Present.
Cooney.
Present.
DeBeet.
Present.
LaRue.
Present.
Phillips.
Present.
Schneider.
Present.
Sure.
Present.
Uh, Quormus present.
Thank you. I'll ask that you recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to all the visitors and any media representatives. Do have a public hearing to amend the fiscal year twenty-five budget. We'll need a motion to open that public hearing.
So moved? Second.
And a roll call vote.
Director Conner.
Aye.
Cooney.
Aye.
DeBeet.
Aye.
LaRue.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Sure.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Any oral or written comments received?
We did not receive any.
And we'll have a motion to close the public hearing.
I have a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
And a roll call vote.
DeBeet and Cooney?
Yeah.
Yes.
Director Conner.
Aye.
Cooney.
Aye.
DeBeet.
Aye.
LaRue.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Sure.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Student school board representatives have a report.
Hello and welcome to the very last twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-four to twenty-five school board meeting. We have a few updates for you. Uh, the student council had their end of the year banquet on May ninth. They also successfully held held uh prom at the Merrill and Cape after prom. Cape is an event where students play games to earn tickets and to win prizes. Uh, thank you to all of the volunteers that made Cape and prom possible. Uh, student council took some of their kids out into the community for day of caring. Day of caring is the day where clubs take kids out of school for part of the day to help Muscatine residents tidy up their yard or plant flowers or any spring cleaning that they might be done. Um, currently the student council is planning their last event, happiness week, which is a week where student council has fun snacks at lunch and themed days to lift up student spirits for finals. Finally, the student council wrote thank you cards to MHS teachers for teacher appreciation week. Um, for also for teacher appreciation week. Um, the, on Monday, teachers received donuts. On Tuesday, staff went around with a snack cart. On Wednesday, they received teaching supplies. On Thursday, they received hot chocolate, coffee, and tea from Starbucks. And then on Friday, MHS student council sent the letters to the teachers. Um, for Key Club, Key Club had their last meeting on last Tuesday where they gave out service awards, announced next year's officers, which are their leaders, and had snacks. Uh, the Key Club members managed to volunteer for over two hun- two thousand and five hundred hours this year. Uh, members finished off the year with their uh selling flowers for their Roses Are Red Charities Cool event where all the proceedings went to the United Way Kids First Fund. Uh, so other volunteering events that they did included day of caring, the elementary's carnivals, and the Muscatine Parks and Rec Easter Acon. Uh, Ms. Keltner with the uh faculty leader of the group would like to have a special thank you to all the Key Club Kiwanis survivors and all the organizations that allowed MHS students to volunteer for them. Amal Yuan had their end of the year banquet on May fourth where they recognized seniors and had a presentation highlighting all the year's events. And then FFA is doing their last plant sale where they sell the plants that the horticulture class and the FFA members grew. Um, they have been selling their plants for the last Friday, for Friday, for the past three weeks. And the final sale is this Friday, so make sure to pick up any last flowers or vegetables that you want to buy from the greenhouse. Uh, over the summer, FFA will have their nursery, landscape, and floral events. And then they will also have their county fairs and state fairs where FFA members will present their livestock. And then also, uh, MHS students overall have been very busy with AP tests and finals. Uh, there is a choir concert tonight at seven and a band concert tomorrow at seven. And that is all for me.
Um, for sports, Muscatine High School's track and field team combined to win seven Mississippi Athletic Conference event championships Thursday night. Six of those came in relays. On the boys' side, the Muskies finished fourth in the ten-team conference meet in DeWitt with one hundred and twelve point seven five points. Pleasant Valley, Bettendorf, and Central DeWitt took the top three spots. Muscatine won the four-by-one-hundred and the four-by-two-hundred sprint medley and distance medley relays on the boys' side. Jamel Forkpup won the one hundred in a season's best time of ten seconds in ten point six seconds, which is crazy. Um, the girls were fifth at the Br- Brady Street Stadium with seventy-five points. PV, North Scott, Bettendorf, and Davenport Central were ahead of the Muskies. Muscatine received wins for, from the four-by-two-hundred and the four-by-four hu- four-hundred. And both teams gear up for the state qualifying meet this Thursday in Eldridge. For golf, in a quad golf meet on Friday, Riley Brockhaus was a medalist with seventy-one points. Muscatine was second place to Pleasant Valley in a quad over Davenport Assum- Assu- whoa, over Davenport Assumption in Central DeWitt. The boys' soccer team is playing tonight at Brady Street Stadium at five-thirty. For sports passes, student activity passes are currently available for sale online through Power School, My School Bucks, or at the MHS Attendance Center for fifty-five dollars. This pass allows you admission into all sporting events except regional and state competitions. Most vocal orchestra and band band events and the fall drama production are also included in this pass. MHS seniors have their last day this Wednesday, and the class of twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven, and twenty-twenty-eight are getting ready for finals. All students are getting their ISAS scores on Tuesday morning, and the test scores increased significantly. In tenth grade math, we advanced from fifty-one percent to sixty-one percent. Tenth English advanced from sixty percent to seventy-five percent. Junior math advanced from sixty-two percent to sixty-six percent, and for English, they advanced from sixty-three percent to seventy-three percent, which is great to hear. Um, some of the reasons that we think that these scores increased were some of the incentives that we implied this year. So the sophomores had the highest overall achievement through the ISAS. So they earned a field day next Friday during sixth and seventh period. And also, all students received ice cream during lunch last week to celebrate the increase in our scores. Uh, lastly, MHS is working on implementing PRIDE during next school year, which stands for Passion, Respect, Integrity, Discipline, and Effort. PRIDE focuses on how students can implement these characteristics in the classroom and around our community. Thank you.
Another thing that I forgot to mention is that, uh, the MHS seniors are going to visit the eighth graders on, um, soon. And then the graduation will soon be decided on whether it is inside or outside.
Any questions?
Well, great news, I would say, you know, all the information that you shared with us is amazing. I mean, especially, you know, the statistics about now in math and English and improvement that we are witnessing, that's all great news. Thank you.
I'd just like to thank, uh, both of you for participating this year, and Kira, thank you for your two years, and good luck to you next year in, in college.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And on that note, Kira, I also want to thank you for the time you've put in. Um, and we're gonna miss you, um, and good luck at Iowa and, and all that you're doing there. Um, and we have a special plaque to recognize, uh, all your contributions. You also get to keep your nameplate.
Yes, oh, yes.
That's exciting. So we're gonna get a question.
The next agenda item are board targets, goals, rep- oh, I'm sorry, it's not. Citizens speak. If there's anyone that would like to speak, address the board. You have three minutes to do so. The next item are the board target goals report. Students will graduate prepared for post-secondary options. Muscatine schools will utilize resources effectively and equitably, and students will learn in a positive and supportive environment. Under that line, we do have a presentation, um, for our math adoption.
All right, good evening. Um, I'm going to start off by introducing our, uh, math presenters tonight. Um, Amber Cossey was not able to make it, um, so I'll pick up, um, her piece. Jordan Meyer, uh, is a teacher at Susan Clark. Gabe McDonald, um, teacher, and actually, both of them are department chairs for their math department. Laney Berry, who's our MTSs coordinator, Leslie Bennett, um, grant principal, and Stacy Orr, principal at Susan Clark, will be presenting tonight. So I just want to start off by thanking, um, this group is here and has done an immense amount of work through our math adoption. Um, but we did have all sixth through twelfth grade teachers who teach math participate in our pilot process to make this decision. So I do want to just start out by thanking them for their work. Um, I always say it's just challenging to teach, um, just in a normal year, but when you're asked to learn two new curriculums on top of that, um, it just, it takes a lot of time and effort, so I want to thank them. Um, tonight, we're going to be sharing, um, in our curriculum adoption process about, um, phase four, five, and six in our process. So phase four, they're going to share a little bit about the piloting experience. Um, and then sharing in phase five, um, what their selection is and why. And then lastly, we'll go briefly just through a slide to kind of update you on what that will look like moving forward.
I get to share real briefly about, uh, the professional learning that we did alongside this curriculum adoption. Uh, we, as a team, kind of selected this book because it empifies, um, just the eight mathematical teaching practices and felt like this would be a driving force behind, um, the type of curriculum we wanted to choose. Um, this is a research-based framework, provides a set of core, um, practices that are high leverage. Um, gives us, talks about the essential teaching skills necessary to promote that deeper math learning. And so we divided this book up into different sections. Um, parts of, members of our team, um, then presented and shared learning on this. And we did really just ask them, as we went through this, to think about the curriculum that we are piloting and seeing that which, um, great to the curriculum would really, um, help support these practices and if we felt they were essential to that learning process.
Thank you. Uh, I am Leslie Bennett. I serve as the principal at Grant Elementary, and I'm gonna be reviewing with you today the different curriculums that were piloted at, uh, the sixth through eight levels, as well as nine through twelve. Um, at the grades six through eight, two curriculums were piloted. First one was Envision by Savas, and that pilot went from January sixth to February fourteenth. Um, teachers were provided with professional development prior to starting that, and there were weekly check-ins with those teachers to get feedback and, um, to collaborate. The second pilot, um, at the grade six through eight level was Eureka Math Squared. As you can see, that went from February twenty-fourth to April eleventh. And again, professional, professional development was provided and weekly check-ins. And then at grades nine through twelve, um, similar timeline. Um, they also did Envision from January sixth to February fourteenth. And Pilot Two, from February twenty-fourth to April eleventh, was Reveal by McGraw-Hill. And those teachers were also, um, given professional development for both of those curriculums and weekly check-ins.
The clicker is always the most stressful part of this. I don't know about everybody else, but. Uh, after the pilots were concluded, after the first pilot finished on February twenty-fourth, all teachers that piloted were asked for feedback about the pilot. Um, and you can see that up here, we have, oh, I think we skipped a slide. See, it's, it's the clicker. There. This is the summary of, um, responses from staff at the top. So you can see the yellow component represents the first pilot, which was Envision. And then the purple represents Eureka Math Squared for grades six through eight and Reveal for grades nine through twelve. And it's pretty clear which curriculum the teachers preferred. Ninety percent preferred Eureka Math Squared in grades six through eight. And then ninety percent, again, preferred Reveal in grades nine through twelve. And then we'll go into more info on that in the next couple slides. It was refreshing to see that students also agreed with the teachers, because it doesn't always happen. Um, we solicited feedback from students after the second pilot, because we didn't want to overwhelm them. And they responded that they preferred the same as the teachers did. We solicited feedback from six hundred three, sixth through eighth graders, so quite a few students participated. And, um, seventy-two point five percent, as you can see, preferred Eureka Math Squared. We asked, we received three hundred and twenty-eight feedback forms from high school students. And seventy-one, seventy-four point one selected Reveal as their preferred curriculum. So it was really nice that it aligned with the teachers' feedback. There are links to comments from students there. If you click on the, I think you have a copy of the link in the slideshow. There's a copy to the Looker Studio, so you can actually read the feedback from students. It's quite interesting, enlightening, some of it. We tried to take out the things that were not, maybe, so enlightening. We also did provide an opportunity for a month to parents to come view materials and provide feedback, and I don't believe anybody took us up on that offer. And so I think they're gonna tell us more about the, um, selections that were made at each grade band and give you more information about that.
Okay, so I'm Jordan Meyer. Um, I'm, teach seventh and eighth grade math at Susan Clark. Uh, funny little thing about the student comments is you, if you read through them, a lot of them, like, the question was like, what's the least favorite thing about the curriculum? And they just say, like, the math. So you'll be interested in reading some of those, uh, comments there. Um, so for six through eight, you can kind of see that bottom with the green and yellow. Those were based on the different criterions that we were, um, scoring the different pilots at. And you can kind of see that, um, they actually look very similar in some of those pieces. Um, the difference between some of them is things like rigor and, um, the questioning of things, how assessments are aligned to standards and all of those types of things. Um, our main focus of when we were doing this pilot was thinking about student success and how does that curriculum support that student's success. Um, and so that was kind of our driving factor. We have like a little synopsis here of why we ended up choosing that Eureka Math Squared. Um, but just to kind of summarize it, very heavy on the student engagement. We know that our students these days, they, they need lots of interactive, engaging things, things that are constantly challenging them, um, and not keeping them bored in our classrooms. Um, so we really liked the Eureka Math Squared for that reason. Um, all of the lessons are really amazing layout, like very plain, lots of space for them to show their work, which we liked, and actually, the students really enjoyed that piece as well. Um, and then it had things like exit tickets and assessments that really aligned to those standards um, and just gave us that really quick formative and summative assessment checks, um, for each of those contents. Students felt like they were successful in this curriculum, and it wasn't overwhelming, and they had access to it, um, online and in the print version. So that was why the six through eight chose the Eureka Math Squared.
Hi, Gabe McDonald, Muscatine High School. Um, I piloted, uh, geometry, and we also piloted algebra and Algebra Two. So as you can see, it was pretty clear, um, that, uh, we chose Reveal. Um, it was easy program to use. The students enjoyed it, had a consumable book. Uh, also, the, um, the online resources available were, were easy to use, easy to navigate. Um, really effective with, uh, being able to get information to, uh, any students who had absences. Um, so, but just overall, a, a good experience. I'm gonna move on to the next slide here. It's probably just easiest to just read this. Um, it just, the curriculum supports all learners through differentiated strategies and accessible practice problems. The Alex platform is an AI-driven assessment and learning tool. Um, and it personalizes instruction based on an initial knowledge check and tracks students' progress to boost motivation. So this Alex program, uh, kind of runs alongside, um, the Reveal math program. And it's a, a, a program where the students can, um, work through it at their own pace. Um, and it has certain checkpoints, certain, uh, knowledge checks, and it's, uh, basically, the idea is just for the students to, to reach all of the standards, uh, within the course. And then, uh, mathematical practices are clearly emphasized and online tools are, um, encouraged to, uh, are encouraged perseverance. Curriculum follows the three pillars of rigor. Uh, guiding students from conceptual understanding to the explore and learn sections to procedural fluency and application through examples and practice. But just wanted to say again, it just was a real smooth pro- process. Um, students enjoyed it, teachers enjoyed it. So really looking forward to learning even more about the program in the future.
Okay, so, um, our next steps are starting to prepare now for implementation of the curriculum. So after tonight, um, with the approval, we would like to move forward with ordering materials for teachers um, and getting those in as soon as possible, so that they, some of them like to look at that over the summer. Um, we will be setting up professional development, um, on one of our in-service days when we return, um, back in August. And then, um, we also get a lot of feedback from our departments, um, just on, throughout the year, what additional training and support they feel they need. And so that is a little fluid, so based just on their feedback, we're able to set that up throughout the year. So those are our next steps. And now I'll open it up for questions.
Question I have, 'cause I mean, you can see from one hand that why you picked the ones that you did, but on the other hand, when you've got, if I've got it correctly, Envision was available for both junior high as well as high school. Is that a need to have that continuity, or the kids are pretty good about, you know what I'm saying, going to a different type of a program system?
I think the main thing that we look at is making sure our standards align, a vertical alignment. And both, all the, um, curriculums that we chose in the very beginning, all were rated high in those areas. And so we do feel that it's okay, and maybe actually sometimes good, because you get a change of pace from junior high to high school with maybe a little bit, you know, a book that makes, even looks a little bit different. Um, I would say for the junior high especially, this, um, program that they choose, the curriculum, is definitely more, um, kind of an investigative, and so it really helps them dig into their thinking. Whereas you get to the high school, it becomes a little bit more traditional, which is okay, 'cause they're preparing a lot of times with that college experience. Um, so yeah, we, I don't think we had any worries about, um, that part, as long as we are making sure that we're, you know, standards are vertically aligned.
Thank you.
If I may ask a question, you know, I'm looking at six to eight and nine to twelve. We have ten responses each, and ten percent in each, which is, I assume, one individual, uh, chose the other one. Uh, whether it's nine to twelve material, uh, or, or, uh, six to eight. Did we know why? I, I mean, I know that the majority wants this. Uh, but, but did we know why that one individual decided to go with the other choice?
Okay, yeah. Um, we did, yeah, Laney, we did bring all of them together. Um, actually, once they individually filled out their surveys, then they all come together and have a discussion, um, around, 'cause we, and we do what's called a consensus process, so that all voices are heard. And I would say, um, you know, I don't know the very specific reason, 'cause I wasn't able to set both groups at the exact same time. But, um, I don't know if in either of your discussions, they had a strong feeling about the other one, or if they were able to just reach consensus with the group. You have that?
The person at the high school that voted initially for the other program was a special education teacher, so her needs were a little bit different than a classroom teacher. And at the sixth grade level, one person just preferred the digital interface, because she could use an iPad and walk around her room. But once we went through the discussion, they were like, yeah, I can see the value of this program. I don't have a problem supporting it, and, you know, they fully champion it now that, like, we came to consensus. That was just an initial, like, polling to get an idea of where they stood.
Thank you.
And actually, on the, um, special education piece, we do make sure we have special education teachers in our, um, pilot. And so some of those concerns, when we are looking at programs, we do want to make sure that they do meet the needs of all students. And so at the high school level, we have the Alex program that will- And so at the high school level, we have the Alex program that will help, you know, individualize. And then when we go through the process, or the adoption piece, we'll make sure that they have supplemental materials as well for students.
Thank you.
Price-wise, but no budget concerns?
That's Tom's famous answer for anything.
I knew it was coming up earlier, but I'll just ask it now.
Yeah, that's not the answer at home when I have a checkbook though.
I just have one more, quick one. And is the, the new alternative high school, will they then be using that same type of curriculum? Because when I went there the other day, they were talking about what they can do to help, to make sure that, I don't want to say accelerate is probably not the proper word. But how the kids were able to catch up the right way and sometimes machines some of the different type of programs? Am I making kind of sense?
Yeah. And so we will be, I know we have a meeting with Mrs. Degner and Ryan Castle. And so we will work on, yes, making sure there's alignment and getting needs. But the math adoption applies to all students at the high school. So regardless of where they're placed, we make sure it's for all students.
Moving to the superintendent update. Got one item under there as well.
All right, so I've got a few things I want to talk about tonight. But I'll start a little bit with, with some of the state level stuff. Although they're not finished, finished, a lot of the kind of dust is settling. We'll work through the process of looking at any legislation that pertains to us, determining if there's guidance available. And if not, we'll make some decisions and move forward to ensure we align with those pieces. We do know there's a requirement, I believe it's the class of twenty-seven, will have to pass a citizenship test. So we'll figure out where that goes, how soon they could take it. Is it paper pencil? Is it digital? How all those costs are covered? Like, we'll have to work through all those pieces. There's some changes to math, some changes to our attendance process. So we'll spend some time as we get into the summer, kind of going through all that. We know that they agreed on two percent. Sounds like they've also now agreed on additional one-time funding for hourly staff. We got that last year. I think from what I've heard, the House has said that was dollars last year that were put on the table to help the House say yes to the AEA changes. And so this has been something they've been kind of wrestling with a little bit in Des Moines. Since the, the, the House has felt like that was on the table, and it should be on the table again. And so that kind of held up, I think, some of those conversations as well. But I believe that's been resolved. So as all those things kind of finalize, we'll, we'll keep you posted on any changes and we'll work through that process. Wanted to let you know that we are looking at a new board system that would kind of manage electronically our meetings and our policies. It's recommended by the School Board Association. We've been looking at it with our transition, with Daphne leaving. It seemed like a good time to, to bring a component like that in. So that'll kind of, you know, make things a lot more streamlined in terms of running a meeting. But it'll also change kind of the public-facing page, that when people go to the School Board site, they'll access that Sibley site. It's used by a number of districts across the state. And so we've had some initial conversations with them, and we'll be moving forward with that. Just wanted to give you a heads up on that. I also want to say, I know some of you were able to attend the MCAP Open House on Friday. And it was, it was a great opportunity to just talk to kids. There's some really powerful stories of kids who, you know, we've got a number of seniors there that, you know, when they started the school year, were not expected to make it to graduation. And they have. And some of them are already enrolled in post-secondary, going to MCC. Kids are, already have full-time employment in places. So it, you know, Kathy and Scott have done just a tremendous job of working with kids. So really thankful for that program. Which does remind me too, graduation is on Sunday. I think the list you'll be approving tonight's like three hundred and nineteen. So it's a smaller class than we've had for a little while. But again, feeling pretty good about that. And yes, there are some weather decisions to make this week, but so far, it looks pretty good for the weekend, so fingers crossed. Because having it outside certainly is a nice opportunity. It's going to be hot this week. I think we hit maybe ninety on Thursday. But right after that, we kind of cooled down to like mid-seventies. So I think we really, if we can hold the rain off, we'll be in a good position there. Also, wanted to mention and congratulate McKenna on The Addams Family. It was a tremendous performance, the cast, the crew, they just did an outstanding job. So really well done, it was a lot of fun. So wanted to say congratulations on that. Let's see, what else do I have on my list here? We're going to get to an item I here in a little bit, which is increases for substitutes. And it was pointed out this morning that our sub-pay is tied to administrative regulations. And so we didn't have that admin regs on here. But you don't necessarily approve admin regs either way. So we still need an approval item. But in looking at that, our admin regs are really based on our previous salary schedule. So one of the things we did, we tied it to the salary schedule, so we wouldn't have to come back. As, you know, there is elevation to that, it's tied to a certain cell within that regulation. Well, we have a new salary schedule. And so we need to spend a little more time fine-tuning that. I'm very confident in talking with Jamie, what we bring back to you is going to look different. So when we get to I, originally, we were going to have you table it, and have you just vote no. And then we'll bring it back again in a new version and, and vote on it again. If we table it and we bring it back exactly the way it is, you're going to have to vote no anyway, right? So.
If nobody makes a motion, though, it'll just die too, correct?
Correct.
So we just won't make a motion on it when it's called?
We can do it either way.
You have to make a motion, one way or the other.
And if nobody seconds it.
Yeah, approve it. The motion would be to approve, and then you would just vote no. If that's what you choose.
Either way. So just wanted to give you a little background on that. Then, the last thing I want to talk about is May is School Board Recognition Month. And so I think last year, we had Tammy Draball come, and she, I think she read from a book, she said really nice quotes. I don't have any of that stuff for you tonight. But what I can tell you is, you know, all of the work, the time, the effort, and the energy that you put in, I know the vast majority of the community never sees. And we certainly appreciate all your efforts and the things that you do on behalf of our students, our staff, and this community. Along those lines, you're learning together. Last year as a board, you were recognized for your work in that, at the, at the School Board Convention. And we're on track to do that again this year as an entire board. So again, you, you have been dedicated to this role, and we just really appreciate all your work. I have a really nice certificate for you. And then we're going to make you come up here and take your picture. I know, I'm sorry, Kim. We're going to take your.
Take pictures now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I throw it off.
Thank you.
Commendations.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
I don't know, I'm not a photo star.
Do we have any questions? Move into our action items. Item A, the following items are considered to be retained by the Board of Education and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the Director so requests. In which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence from the agenda. We have minutes, employment recommendations, bills and claims, policies with no minimal or changes required by law. Student teaching agreement with Grantview University. Shared personnel agreement with EICC. And the AEA purchasing agreement. How would the board like to proceed?
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Move to item.
So I'm going to, I will pause here just for a second, because I do, now that we are through the consent agenda and employment recs. Tonight, we have Michelle Jarrett here, and I just want to introduce you to her. She will be taking over in Daphne's position. We're really excited to have her, but I want to make sure you could put a name and a face together there. And so we're, we're excited to have her on board as she transitions over the summer. And we'll spend some time with Daphne and making sure she's ready to go. So welcome, Michelle.
Congratulations.
Item I, approve the following increases in pay for substitute certified teachers and nurses. Tier one, two point eight six percent. Increase tier two, ten point five three percent. Tier three, two point eight six percent. We'll take a motion to approve that first, just so we can vote.
I'll make the motion to approve.
One second.
Second.
And then.
You can discuss if you want.
We can, yep. Did anyone have further questions, I guess? All right, maybe I'll just.
Just remember, we're recommending you vote no.
So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No.
You can say.
She can say, yeah.
You can, oh, okay. All right, upside. Who said, who said yea?
Karen, did you mean to vote that you wanted to approve it?
Yes.
Okay. So we have one aye. Any opposed, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
So we will work on that and bring back a revised recommendation.
All right, item J, approve amending the fiscal year twenty-five budget as presented. How would the board like to proceed?
I move to approve the amending the FY twenty-five budget as presented.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Approve the collective bargaining agreement between Muscatine Community School District and Local fifteen sixty. Council of AFS CME for the secretarial clerical aide and para educator unit. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Ken or Matt?
Ken or Matt?
Or second. Give it to Ken and I'll second.
Any discussion on that item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Next is to approve the math curriculum adoption and professional development to Eureka, first grade six through eight. An amount of three hundred thirty-three thousand seven hundred sixty-four dollars and fifty-three cents. Math curriculum adoption and professional development to Reveal for grades nine through twelve. In the amount of one hundred ninety-four thousand six hundred ten dollars and eleven cents. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion on that?
Just once again, thanks for everything on that. It just seems like it's been a really good process the past couple of programs. So yeah, it's helped us understand more, so thanks again for all of that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Approve the purchase of one hundred and fifty MacBooks for teachers in the amount of one hundred thirty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. Do we have a motion?
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Has come to the podium. Do we have any questions, discussion?
So is this, this is just standard, what we've done?
It's part of the annual renewal.
Yep, it's our year two of that replacement cycle.
What do we do with the other ones? We ship them back or?
Sell them, resell them to whoever gets the highest bidder, after we strategically allocate them to older machines.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Approve the purchase of MHS tennis courts light structure system for musculity in the amount of two hundred thirty thousand eight hundred and thirteen dollars. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion on that?
Are these the latest and greatest? Lights?
Yes, they're the latest and greatest. At the discount. And we're, there's only lighting for four courts now, this is going to light the entire eight courts.
But again, there's got to be electricity savings too, I'd imagine, with this new technology, so. Thanks again to Musco for the discount.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Approve the tentative MHS class of twenty twenty-five graduates. Need a motion?
I make the motion to approve the tentative.
I think Kim moved already.
Oh.
Kim.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, second. I did hear. I'm sorry.
Any discussion? Congratulations to a class of twenty twenty-five on Sunday. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? We'll move into the discussion and information portion of the agenda, starting with April financials.
So tonight, the April financials there, in front of you, the, the deposit balances, Treasurers Report, our general fund, actual versus budgeted. And then expenses by object are presented. Our general fund balance is down two point three percent from the same period last year, but I'm not really concerned about, you know, less than three percent change. So we have received eighty-four percent of our general fund budgeted revenues through April, approximately the same as last year. Sixty-nine percent of our budget expenditures with two months left. However, you know, we have about four months' worth of teacher salary and benefits that we expensed. So not concerned about that. So we'll get all that done and recognized by the end of June, or in the end of June. So I did add one page at the, the last page is update on our outstanding fines, fees, and meal balances as of April thirtieth. We have gone down about five point two percent since last month. Our negative lunch account balances has increased though, since last month. So next month, we'll be talking about those fines and fees for next year, along with an update on our, our collection progress. That we will be making here, that we approved last month, or maybe it was two months ago by now. So. And then finally, well, actually, I'm just going to touch base on amending the budget. You know, one of the reasons was curriculum cycle. If you remember, in the general fund, you know, we have this concept of spending authority. So a one-time expenditure for a curriculum cycle is, didn't raise any flags for me. So I think we'll still be within our budget authority, obviously, in the general fund, so no concerns there. Finally, as I announced last month, we were awarded that Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. financial reporting from ASBO International, and I received notice this month that from the Governmental Finance Officers Association, so the GFPA, same report that I submit, we were awarded the certificate of achievement in excellence in financial reporting for FY twenty-four, so I'm happy about that. And then, so, so you know the difference? ASBO International is all school business officials across the United States, North America, South America, Australia, and then the GFPA is governmental finance accounting, so that's city, counties, and states, so, anyway, that's the difference between those two, but that's it. Thank you very much.
Going to have to keep the street going.
We're trying.
No retirement.
Pushing through, yep, yeah, right.
Are you going to come take a picture with us when you get it, the certificate?
Sure, why not? Thank you.
Revised Board of Education meeting dates for December twenty twenty-four to November twenty twenty-five are also attached.
Do we, do we want to put that word training down there, the twenty-seventh of July?
Yes, I would do that.
We have the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six student handbook, second reading on that. Anything else to discuss since last time? And then first reading on policies, new ones for artificial intelligence in education environment, and the regulations, artificial intelligence in the education environment. We've talked about this a couple of times in the past already, any questions on how they're written? Second reading on policy five oh two point one, student conduct. Moving into announcements, meetings, and events. We have May eighteenth, Muscatine High School graduation at two PM, inside or outside, to be determined. May twenty-sixth, Memorial Day, there's no school. May thirtieth will be the student's last day, it's two-hour early dismissal. June third is the Riverbend in Muscatine Community School District Mobile Food Pantry, four PM here. June ninth, regular school board meeting, six fifteen. And then a reminder that tonight was our last community conversation until school resumes in August or September, we'll post exactly when those resume. So, are there any other announcements, updates?
I'd just like to thank the, the staff that we have, you know, May is kind of a trying month a lot of times, with the students wanting to get out, and all the field trips and everything like that, so I'd like to thank the administrative staff and the teaching staff for all the hard work, and keep your sanity this month.
I'm going to piggyback a little bit there on Denny, from the standpoint that, I also know it's hard to get everything done and by deadlines, you know, because you want everything done before school, you know, ends and such, and so you guys work very hard at it, and we appreciate it, what you're able to take and do to make it a good and reasonable, so that we can understand when you guys present us, you know, all of this fun stuff. And I just need one other thing to say, and that has to do with going to the MCSD, the MHS Alternative, you know, you notice I used that MCSD thing there. I went to that on Friday, and I'm with Clint, it was, it was actually very amazing to see how those kids and the interaction that was going on, and they were so proud of themselves and everything. And I had a, a chance to be able to kind of follow as a student came in with his parents about possibly doing it for the following year. And so I'm just kind of listening up, and it was amazing how she was able to take him through everything, so that it was a good experience for them, to help them make a decision if this would be the right place for him. And there is quite a, quite a bit of, of things that the kids can enjoy about, you know, their work, and that it really showed, there's a chart on the board that showed kids that before, this is how many times they were in school. But then this year, because of what they've been able to do and learn, it's like, this is how many days they were in school. It was just amazing to see that it was an environment for them that could take at work, so thank you for putting all that together for us.
Make a note maybe for announcements for our summer lunch program when we find out those details?
Yeah, I will, we'll share those with you when we have them.
Okay, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.